Okay, good evening, everyone. Today is April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and this is the meeting of the Northborough Planning Board. My name is Amy Peretzky. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Um, we were notified that we actually don't have to do the script anymore for um, for the COVID script. As long as I um, announce that all votes will be my roll call vote still because we are fully remote and that if um, people wanna follow along, it will be on the agenda. The link to call in and also um, that it is being recorded. So, alright, it is now six oh two and I still have to make sure that everybody can be heard, so I will do a roll call vote. Um, Bill Pierce?
Here.
Anthony Zaitin?
Here.
Millie Milton?
Here.
Um, Brad is running late, so he's not here yet. Oh, there he is!
Hop in, good timing.
Just in the nick of time. And um, and Lori Connors?
Here.
Okay, and will any other staff be joining us tonight?
I, I did get a last minute uh, email from Josh with a letter which I forwarded to all of you. Um, he did not tell me whether he would be joining us this evening or not, so I'm not sure.
Okay, alright, thanks. First on the agenda, we have the continuation of the application for a common driveway special permanent site plan residential A District, eleven, three and seven Reservoir Street. Um, we did receive a letter that they want to continue, they want to continue the hearing until May twentieth. So, um, we have to pick a time. I think we should pick six, you think so Lori?
That sounds good.
Okay. Okay. Do I hear a motion to continue the hearing for the common driveway on three, seven and eleven Reservoir Street for May twentieth at six P M?
So moved.
Second.
And Bill seconds, roll call vote. Bill Pierce?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
Brad Blanchett?
Aye.
And I'm an I. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the zoning bylaws and um, we're gonna start the zoning bylaws, but at like ten past six, I might stop it because we do have a public hearing for scenic road application and I didn't want them to have to sit through our whole meeting. So, we do have six minutes, so um, I think we're gonna start. Lori, um, maybe you could tell us about the letter from Attorney Aichman, he had some uh, some updates.
Sure, um, I will share my screen if I can. So I did receive a uh, track changes version of the warrant um, and I saw that John had made some additional um, comments in particular to Article fifty-eight and Article sixty-two. So with regards to Article fifty-eight, uh, he did highlight letter H, water and sewer services for an attached accessory dwelling unit shall be made by means of a principal dwelling's interior plumbing. The Department of Public Works will not provide or approve a dedicated water meter or service for attached accessory dwellings, nor will a dedicated sewer connection to the main be allowed. So his comment was this requirement could be challenged as unreasonable under certain circumstances per the state regulations. Any requirement concerning use, utility, safety and emergency access that is more restrictive than is permitted permitted by state requirements, including under the fire code, is unreasonable. Then uh, the letter E below um, had to do with the off-street parking space and he said, note that state per state regulations, no off-street parking can be required for an A D U located on a lot where any part of the lot is within half mile of a transit station, which of course that's not applicable to us. Um, I did reach out to Amy to talk about letter H and ask her what she wanted to do. And um, she thought that because this is the requirement, well, actually, why don't, Amy, why don't you say what you told me instead of me putting words in your mouth?
Well, I think when we both, well, we were both were kind of talking about it and it was something that Scott wanted to add it, Scott Shoppe and Tier. So we were gonna leave it because Attorney Aichman said it could be challenged, but you know, it's, it's not a, you know. There are a lot of things that a lot of towns are doing that Bob has mentioned may go through the court system and they may be challenged, they may not be challenged, so since Scott Shoppe and Tier wanted it and we didn't have time to reach out to him, we just, I thought we were just gonna leave it on.
Um, on letter I, the only change that we did make is uh, this was the language that was in the bylaw already, so we did strike out at least because that was another comment that came from John Aichman previously uh, where he was concerned that that would um, make uh, the building inspector feel that maybe we were saying that there should be more than one off-street parking space and it is um, the requirement by Mass General Law is only one off-street parking space, so.
Hmm, okay.
Just to clarify that, we, we struck at least. And then moving right along, he made no changes on the other bylaws in between. But Article sixty-two had to do with the inclusionary zoning bylaw. And um, let's see. Coming up. Density bonus. So, um, he suggested eliminating this language here shown in red. May waive the density and dimensional regulations specified in section seven dash oh-six dash oh-three oh in order to help offset the affordable dwelling requirement. Uh, so, his comment says, I recommend deleting this language. It appears to be a statement of intent that is duplicated below. So, I agreed with him. Went over this with Amy, uh, she agreed to delete that as well. Um, then he also pointed out to me that I had the wrong reference on uh, seven zero six zero two zero. Um, which I looked in the zoning bylaw and found him to be correct. So I switched wherever it said seven dash zero six dash zero three oh, two oh two oh. Um, and I believe that was it. Those were his only comments.
So. That it's confusing because they have the table is oh two oh, but they have it attached to the end of oh three oh, just because they wanted to put this page sideways and that's where it fit in the book. So it goes oh two oh, oh three oh, then the table for oh two oh. Which is why we thought the table was oh three oh.
And I, I think that when we modified the zoning bylaw last year, uh, every single reference that I put to the dimensional table was oh three oh because that's what it says over the table. So uh, that will probably be something we'll have to correct housekeeping in the future. So. Uh, anyway, I'm gonna stop sharing that. So I sent out the final version as it appears in the warrant to all of you, it's reflected in that uh, board of selectmen letter dated April ninth. So did anybody have any questions? Or concerns about that? Oh, Amy, there was one, one thing we noticed uh, in the design review committee, it was a word. What was it? It was in the sign by law. It will change that as well.
We had a change approved to review because Bob says the design review committee doesn't approve anything, they review things. So we did meet with the design review committee this week and we changed that word in the sign by law to read that the design review committee will review the signs versus approve the signs. So we did make that one change too because Bob had called it out, so we, when we met this week, we um, made that change.
So the deadline uh, for it going to the paper was Friday. So um, that was the conversation I had with Amy because of course here we were meeting on Tuesday, but it was going to be after it went to the printer. So if anybody has a problem, of course, we can make changes on the town meeting floor. Um, I didn't think that you folks would have a problem with those minor changes, but if you do, then certainly mention them now. Nope?
No, where, just where was that notice for the approve versus review, just out of curiosity?
So that is on page. Let's see. Uh, if you're looking at the board of selectmen letter, it is on page. See.
Is that the one that's the final corrected one?
Yeah, it's on the board of selectmen um, version. Let's see, send it. Um, maybe prepare the design review committee shall review. It's um, on page five. Look under C, sign permits, non-conformity and compliance. Uh, subsection two, starting design review by the design review committee is required for all wall projecting awning or freestanding signs in the downtown business district. And then the third sentence down says the design review committee shall review the signed permit application for compliance with those guidelines and sends its review written review letter with recommendations regarding sign design to the building inspector within twenty days of receipt of the signed permit. Mm-hmm. Application failure, the design review committee to act within twenty days of receipt of the application shall be deemed a lack of opposition thereto. I think it was there.
So it was already, it's already been changed in this?
Yeah, so this is the final version. So we changed it. I went upstairs, I spoke with the selectmen's office and asked them to change the word from approved to review.
Okay.
And they did that. So it'll appear correctly on the printed warrant.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Hey. Are there any questions about the zoning bylaws? That are going to town meeting? Okay, well, I think we're gonna stop. Do you guys mind stopping here? We'll do the scenic by, um, scenic driveway and then we'll come back, the scenic road by law?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And we shouldn't have much more to do with the zoning bylaws when we come back, so. Alright.
I see that Josh Van Houten is sitting in the attendees. However, our applicant for the scenic road by law is not.
Well, then maybe we'll finish with the, we'll finish with what we're doing until they show up.
So the um, what else we need to do tonight having to do with the zoning bylaws, the amendments is to vote on your recommendation for town meeting. And then you folks to decide which articles you wanna present. And then I, I don't know if you wanna go over the slideshow um, or whether you want me to just email it to you and then if you want to make changes to various slides, especially the ones you're presenting, you can send those to me. Um, of course, town meeting is uh, in a week and a half and I know they're gonna want these slides a week in advance. So uh, if I could get your final changes a week in advance, that'd be great.
Okay, my vote would be that you email them out to us and then the person who's doing the slides can update this, their own slides. Because I would hate to go through them now and update someone else's presentation slide. How do you feel?
Yeah.
Everybody else?
I agree.
That works for me.
Good. Alright, so do you wanna vote your recommendations then on each of the warrant articles?
Sure, should we close the public hearing or should we leave it open in case there's some discussion? So, I guess.
You can leave it open while you're voting your recommendations. Just in case there's, well, although it doesn't look like we have anybody in the audience.
That's what I was gonna ask, if there's anybody in the audience that has any last questions, it is a public hearing. But the only one in the audience is Josh. So unless Josh has any questions, we can go forward.
Okay.
So, I just got a email from the applicant who's saying the computer won't let him get into the Zoom meeting.
Hmm.
Um. Maybe I'll try re-sending him the link.
Okay.
I'm gonna send it to um, as if he's one of us.
While he tries to get on, do you want me to take a vote? For the warrant articles?
Uh.
Okay, just opening it up. I can share my screen.
Do we have them all numbered yet or do, do we just presume that from going back and forth from fifty to sixty-two?
They are numbered. Um. So I can actually tell you what the numbers are. Um, the first article is Article fifty-six.
Okay, so it starts fifty-six.
So that's the uh, definition of dwelling unit.
Got it.
Do you see the articles?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. So the first article is Article fifty-six, it's a zoning bylaw, section seven oh-two oh-four oh, definitions, and it's changing the definition of a dwelling unit. Do I hear a motion to vote to approve changing the definition of a dwelling unit? Do I have to read the whole thing or can we just do it?
Um, so you're recommend, so you are uh, recommending that uh, to approve to town meeting, so that's your recommendation to town meeting?
Okay.
So you're making a motion to recommend approval of Article thirty, uh, fifty-six.
Okay.
Bill said, yeah, you said so moved.
Okay, Bill said so moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Bill Pierce?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
And Brad Blanchett?
Aye.
And I'm an I. Okay, that one is five to nothing. Next article would be Article fifty-seven. Do I hear a motion to recommend approval of Article fifty-seven which updates bylaw section seven oh-three oh-five oh site plans?
So moved.
Second.
Here's, and Bill seconds, okay, roll call vote, um, Bill Pierce?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
Brad Blanchett? Oh, I think Brad's frozen. He's not moving.
Yeah, he's frozen.
Okay.
He's going off and then on.
I'm an I, but we'll have to wait for him to see if we get our five and O. Brad's back?
Yeah, I don't know what happened there, uh, Zoom crash, but yeah, I'm an I.
Okay. And I'm an I. So that one is five to nothing. Do I hear a motion to recommend to approve Article fifty-nine?
Uh, fifty-eight.
One fifty-eight?
Yep.
Oh, my number is off. All right, second. Fifty-eight. Zoning by law section seven oh-five oh-two oh, classification of uses, which is the updates to the accessory dwelling unit by.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, um, Bill Pierce?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
Brad Blanchett?
Aye.
And I'm an I. That's five to nothing. Do I hear a motion to recommend Article fifty-nine zoning by law section seven oh-six oh-three oh, supplemental regulations to add the lot shape regularity definition? So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Bill Pierce?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
Brad Blanchett?
Aye.
And I'm an I. Okay, do I hear a motion? Actually, I should ask if anyone has any um, comments from respect. Do I hear a motion? Well, maybe we make the motion and then if there are comments, somebody can um, state them. Do I hear a motion to recommend to approve bylaw sixty? Section seven oh-nine oh-one oh land clearing and grading?
So moved.
Second. Okay, roll call vote, um, Bill Pierce?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
Brad Blanchett?
Aye.
And I'm an I, so that one's five to nothing. Do I hear a motion to recommend to approve Article sixty-one zoning by law section seven oh-nine oh-four oh signs?
So moved.
Second.
That's the second, okay, roll call vote, um, Bill Pierce?
No.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
Brad Blanchett?
Aye.
And I'm an I, so that one is four to one. Okay, um, do I have a motion to approve Article sixty-two? Which is zoning by law section seven-ten oh-seven oh, the inclusion of affordable housing?
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, Bill Pierce?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
Brad Blanchett?
Aye.
And I'm an I, so that is five to nothing. Congratulations, everybody. Um. So now I think I'm gonna close the hearing. And then after we hear from the applicant, if he got on, then we can decide who's doing which articles. So do I have a motion to close the hearing on the proposed amendments to the sections of the zoning by law chapter seven as we just described?
So moved.
Second.
Um, roll call vote, Bill Pierce?
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin?
Aye.
Millie Milton?
Aye.
Brad Blanchett?
Aye.
And I'm an I. Okay, that hearing has been closed. I see the applicant has joined us, but he's joined us as Kerry. Kerry's really changed.
Yeah.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
We can.
Okay, thank you. I um, yeah, funny thing is I was able to click on the YouTube livestream and see you guys talking, but I couldn't originally click on the join meeting. The error message was saying that the host hadn't started the meeting, so that's kind of what was going on on my end, just to kind of FYI for you guys.
Hmm. Do you know how to change the name on the Zoom?
You know, um, I usually just click Zoom and, you mean like my name right now?
Right, I think because you were sent a link from Lori, it says Kerry Martin under your name.
Oh, alright, let me, can, I just, I get some buttons, I can, it says participants, and share screen, record, app, stop video, mute.
If you click the three dots uh, after mute, it'll give you the option of changing your name. It says rename.
Alright, I clicked on the mute audio settings, test speaker.
So if you click on your picture.
On your frame.
And then it says there's a blue box that says mute and then there's three dots, a blue box with three dots in it. Click on the three dots and then click on rename.
I'm just looking for the three dots.
If you go up to the right of your picture and you put your cursor up there, it should show up.
Alright, I'm seeing like sign in, view. I can see you guys on the top of the screen, I got like six different views up top.
You, you've gotta pull your mouse over your picture.
I see, webinar user.
No, Lori or Amy, you guys can do it because you're co-hosts.
Okay.
You have the ability to change it for them.
Great, well, maybe Lori will do it.
I'll do it.
And I'll read the public hearing notice before we do the presentation, I just have to read the public hearing notice.
Okay.
Okay. Um, in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, chapter forty-eight, section nine, the Northborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing on April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five at six-ten, it's now six-twenty-eight, to consider the scenic road application submitted by M O C O R L L C. C O Jennifer Correvue?
Yep.
Okay.
Come on.
For one eighty-nine Howard Street, map thirty-seven, parcel one fourteen, in the residential B zoning district. The applicant, do I have to read the whole thing, Lori?
Um, you don't have to read the uh, you know, how you get into the meeting.
Okay, I just, the applicant seeks approval within the limits of the road right of way to remove approximately twenty-four feet of a stone wall in order to construct a driveway for a single-family home. In that, yep, that's the rest of it, the rest of it is how to log in. Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
Would you mind introducing yourself and do you wanna present what you're, um, what you're doing?
Yeah, so uh, I'm Steve Corovo, I'm here for the applicant, MoCor LLC. Um, what we have is a single-family home proposed on the lot. We have a site plan designed with the septic system in the front and we basically, we took a look at how we wanted to lay the site out and um, where, where to bring the driveway in in context of where the, you know, how the, how the lot uh, connects to their street there. We think that's the best space to do it. To, in order to get in, we don't need to cut any trees down in the right of way, we just need to move the stones out of the way. And um, if you, I sent along a picture at some point to kind of demarcate where we're going in, it kind of has a red dash, that's the center line of the driveway. So our plan was basically to open it up twenty-four feet, take the stones that are there and use them in spots where the wall is not as discernible, we'll just kind of stack them up and uh, if you look at the stone wall on the lot, it's somewhat not discernible as you head towards the center of town, so we figured we'd just take the rocks and move them towards that side.
Okay, thanks. Lori, did you have anything to add?
Um, no, I uh, went up to the site, I saw where he had identified the location of where the driveway was, so there was a, a mark on a wall which I uh, forwarded the picture to you. And uh, it, it looked uh, pretty self-explanatory. My suggestion is like the prior application we had a couple of months ago um, on Reservoir Street. Uh, my suggestion would be he used the stones that are removed for the driveway opening to uh, rebuild the wall within the vicinity on either side of the uh, driveway. Uh, it's pretty short. Uh, it's pretty short, um, I tried to, to open the uh, picture, which I have on my screen, but unfortunately, I can't see it with the share. Um, so I'm not gonna be able to open that up, for whatever reason, I do not know why. It's, um, actually, no, I see it now, so.
I was gonna say Lori, it's on the town website, under the application, I'm looking at it right now, so.
Yep. Yeah, so there it is.
Yep.
Yeah.
So this, uh, these three trees right beyond the, uh, stone wall. Those would be removed, but they are not within the right of way, is my understanding. Correct me if I'm wrong, Steve.
No, you, you've got it right, correct.
Well, they look like they're hanging over the street anyway, so it's probably a good thing.
Okay.
So when you're looking at that picture there, that's at, standing at the corner of the lot, looking down the road towards the center of town. In that first, like, maybe twenty-five or thirty feet, that wall is around that height, once you get thirty to forty feet down, it's trace, it's kind of like, there's some stones there, but it's not as discernible as what you're looking at right there.
Where's the driveway on that picture, is it downwards?
If, it's possible to show that second photo with the red center line, I don't know if it's a possibility.
Uh, I'll have to find that in my emails.
I have it up, Lori, if you want me to share, if you want me to share my screen, I can.
If you wanna make, um, Bill the co-host.
Yeah, if he wants to, I might be able to share it too, I can see it on my computer.
No, I can.
Can you, uh?
I got it, yeah.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, exactly, that's a good picture, so like, that red paint's the center line of where the driveway is gonna go. And, uh, as you can kind of see, it's, as you go left, as looking at the photo, it's barely discernible. As you go right, it starts to get into what you saw in the other picture.
Yeah. Okay. Um, so any board members have any comments? Um, Lori did mention that Josh had wrote, he wrote a letter right before the meeting and I did read that, I don't know if others did, but Josh didn't have any concerns either. So.
Amy, I have a couple of questions, um, well, versus a comment, yeah, it's, I agree with what Lori said, um, as far as repurposing the rocks that are being removed. Uh, just to give that the rest of the wall a little bit more life, um. Uh, I, I would agree with that, and then, uh, not, uh, not a question about the rocks, but, um, is there a particular reason or can you walk me through the reasoning where you put the driveway on? Was it Green Street instead of, uh, yeah, Green Street, not like the other end of Howard Street, is it a safety issue or is it just because of the, the design with the septic tank?
Mostly the design with the septic and it works out better when you come in on the higher side, the lot has a very gentle slope. But when you have the option to come in on the lower or the higher side, it always works out better coming in on the higher side, cause then you only have a couple steps getting into the house. When you come in on the lower side, when there's a slight slope, then you, sometimes you have a couple more steps getting into the house, people always prefer if they can get in and out of the house two or three steps.
Okay, alright, cool, thank you.
Alright, um, I'm gonna check to see if there are any public comments. There are two people in the audience, did either of you have a question? Okay, seen none. Um, Lori has written up a draft decision, I'm not sure if people had time to read it, I can bring it up. Has the applicant had time to read it, she had three conditions, I was curious if you were okay with them?
Yeah, I, I hadn't read it yet.
You haven't read it yet?
No, no, I didn't forward it, cause it was such a tiny decision. I figured it'd be easy to, easy to talk about right here.
Right, I could share it, it pretty much just says what we talked about, about reusing the stones.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
On the, um, I'm gonna pull it up. Alright, so the three conditions. Um, Lori had shared was the stones removed, shall be kept on site and used to repair, rebuild the existing stone wall. No tree whose trunk has a diameter of four inches or more. Um, shall be removed unless the tree warden authorizes a tree removal. And that's on the right of way.
Yep.
And, um, the applicant shall complete the stone wall prior to receipt of an occupancy permit for the dwelling at one eighty-nine Howard Street.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Um, how about the board? Did you have any comments or any other conditions that you wanted to add?
Nope.
No.
Nope.
Okay, so if no one has any questions or concerns? Do I have a motion to approve the common drive, I mean, it's on the common driveway? Oh, I didn't close it?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion to close the, um, public hearing for the scenic road decision?
So moved. Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Bill Pierce.
Aye.
Um, Anthony Zaitin.
Aye.
Millie Milton.
Aye.
Brad Blanchett.
Aye.
And I'm an I. Now that the hearing's closed, do you have anything else you'd like to discuss?
Nope.
Alright, hearing nothing, hearing none, um, do I have a motion to approve the scenic road decision for one eighty-nine Howard Street?
So moved.
Subject to, if you could just make it subject to the conditions.
Okay, subject to conditions. A, B, and C.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, um, Bill Pierce.
Aye.
Anthony Zaitin.
Aye.
Millie Milton.
Aye.
Brad Blanchett.
Aye.
And I'm an I. Um, congratulations, it's been approved.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks Lori for doing up the decision in advance.
My pleasure.
Next on the agenda, we'll go back to, um, voting on who will be presenting the zoning bylaws at town meeting. Um, the first three I would think would go together by one person, cause they all have to do with the accessory dwelling bylaws. It's changing the definition, the site plan and describing the accessory dwelling units. So, I would think those three would go together with one person.
That makes sense.
Yeah, and then there's a reg, a regular lot, then there's the land use and clearing. Signs and inclusionary zoning. Is there anyone who wants to choose one or the other?
Madam Chair, just as a reminder, I am not gonna be there for town meeting. So I'm gonna be in San Francisco at a conference, unfortunately. So I get to miss all the fun.
I suspect you're gonna be having a lot more fun than we are.
Yeah, I doubt it, with a bunch of boring cybersecurity nervous people.
I would be more than happy to take the first three, maybe even the first four, unless that's too many.
The first three would be good, because, you know, then we'll leave some for Anthony and Brad and myself.
Unless somebody else wanted those, it doesn't matter to me.
Doesn't matter to me. If you wanna do them, you can do them.
Okay.
Anybody else have a preference for any of them?
For me, it's really, uh, that's the one I did not wanna do, so other than that, I'm pretty open, I do like inclusionary, but if somebody's got a desire to do that.
If you wanna do that one, you can do that one.
Yeah, run with it, Anthony.
Anthony, okay.
So that leaves signs, land clearing and grading and, um, a regular lot definition. Which would you like, Brad, do you want any of them?
Uh, I don't wanna do signs.
That's on you, and you know that.
Okay, signs is on me.
You know it.
Um, yeah, I'll do the, what was it, the, the land clearing and
Did a regular lot.
Yeah, the regular lot.
And, and I'm sure Lori would help us with any of these. Um, if we have questions up in front of town meeting floor.
Okay, so, uh, Anthony, you said you're doing inclusionary zoning?
Correct.
Alright.
I understood that was kind of a hot one last time around, so could be fun.
Inclusionary was a hot one last time?
That's what I heard.
It's ago, it, it got shot down, probably before I was on the board, before two thousand fourteen. But I read it in the minutes, somebody asked why it got shot down and I guess some people showed up to shoot it down.
Well.
You just never know, year to year.
Yeah, maybe things have changed enough, we'll see.
Well, and I think the fact that we're just sort of bringing this up to state law, what the current state law is, I think is gonna help.
It's the accessory dwelling one. But the inclusionary, we added in a density bonus, which they, they didn't have the first time. So that should help.
That, that might help sweeten the pot a bit.
Right.
Okay, so I think we're all set, Lori said that she'll send out the, um, slides. And we can update as we see fit and get them back to her a week before town meeting. And then Lori, um, similar to past town meetings, can you print out the motions that we're supposed to read? Usually we get the motion and then we have to hand it to Fred George or one of the board of selectmen and they hand it up.
Yep, absolutely, I will get those for you and, uh, send them along.
Okay. Before we present Brad, we usually like to sit together down at the front and Lori can hand us what we need and
Okay.
We have support for each other.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you guys usually sit off in the distance, I remember.
I'm happy not to be on the hot seat for once. It's nice to, to share with you guys, although I have to do the presentation for Article, uh, twenty-nine on the Blake Street project, so I'll be sharing your pain this year and that project at least.
Sure, I'll be dragging you up there, Lori.
Well, I'm happy to help out in any way I can.
Alright, next on the agenda, um, are there any subcommittee updates? Or A and R's actually lot releases and bonds?
We have none this time.
Okay. Any subcommittee updates?
Nope, not for me.
Not really.
Design review map, but I already told you about the update, we had one small change, but we updated it. And, um, I mentioned it during our zoning by law discussion. Okay. So, next planning board meetings are May sixth and May twentieth, is there anything on the agenda for May sixth, Lori?
I just received an A and R today. So that's pretty much the only thing I have on the agenda for May sixth.
Okay. And May twentieth is the scenic oh, common driveway.
Yes.
Okay, and the master plan implementation committee doesn't meet until May.
So the ZB, ZBA meeting at the end of April was, uh, canceled due to a lack of business. So we're gonna be having a special executive session, um, probably on May eighth.
Okay. Right, does anybody else have anything to add?
Alright.
Nope, well, good luck, everybody, and I'll see you at town meeting.
Alright, have a great week.
Alright, thanks.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you for your motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I gotta write that on my notes.
To adjourn.
So moved.
Roll call vote, Anthony Zaitin.
Aye.
Bill Pierce.
Aye.
Millie Milton.
Aye.
Brad Blanchett.
Aye.
And Amy Perksies and I, alright, now I'll see you guys at town meeting.
Thank you, everyone, good night.
Alright, thanks, bye.